And how about, did you see the red?
Yeah.
I was.
True as well.
I was like, this is a big high school. Like it's based on how I really got to. I don't even know.
Okay, you online?
Yes. He was right there.
Yeah. We'll take a picture.
And just what happened.
And I will say this.
Cleveland is the worst baseball team. Oops, they win. Or two days ago. Yes. They, they don't get. Except for here. One, one, eight. They hit.
Where who have?
Double, double home at the same.
I'm calling it Nancy from JPO.
Okay, good morning.
They are such a great.
Good, good morning, everyone. It's 10 a.m. Uh, we ask you to please rise if you're able for the opening prayer and a pledge of allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we open another month, may be a chapter of the year that brings continued blessings and answer prayers to each one of us. The season of harvest is upon the farmers. May you provide them with good weather, health and prosperity as they gather the fruits of their labors. Father, this morning, we have two monthly awarenesses that weigh on our hearts and minds. Lord, we recognize this month as a time to bring awareness to national disability employment. This year's theme is celebrating value and talent. It was declared by the United States Congress in nineteen eighty-eight. Raise awareness of the employment needs and contributions of individuals with disabilities. We thank you for each one of these lives and their many talents that they share. Their lives help build businesses and communities throughout the nation. We pray they will inspire others to work together in inclusion so that all may prosper. Father, we're also aware of a plague that separates, destroys and ruins lives. It doesn't want inclusion, but only total control of its deception and lies. That evil that many Americans are experiencing is domestic violence. We pray as we bring awareness to this humanity during National Domestic Violence Month. That many will be helped in the effort to end this horror. This plague affects one in every three women. One in every four men. That suffers this plague in their lifetime. Globally, seven hundred and thirty-six million women have experienced physical or sexual violence. On a typical, typical day, domestic violence hotlines receive twenty thousand eight hundred calls nationwide. It affects schools, workplaces and the family. Domestic violence is at the heart, tears a family apart. We pray for the men and women who are scared, feel trapped and lack hope. Lord, give them hope with clarity and confidence, a path forward. In your word, you state, when the righteous cry for help, the Lord hears and rescues them from all their troubles. We pray for the innocent children that witnessed their horrific reruns. We pray they do not grow to recycle another generation of insanity. We ask for guidance and assistance for the professionals, teachers, neighbors and friends. Be on alert for the signs to prevent any further victims. May they have the boldness to become involved to stop these brutalities. Let us all take measures to strive to eliminate this violence permanently. And may we share your love, harmony and unity. Now, Lord, we ask for your guidance over our meeting this day. May our decisions be in accordance with your will. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. This time we'll convict. This time we'll convene the commissioners' public meeting. And we have a approval in the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Oh, fair side.
Hi.
Hey, do we need public comment? On agenda items only? You online? Okay, we have a very important proclamation this morning and we're glad we have quite an audience here. To share this with us. Cause they do extremely important work. This is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in nineteen eighty-nine, October was first declared as National Domestic Violence Awareness Prevention Month. Time to acknowledge domestic violence survivors, survivors. Show gratitude for those who support, protect and advocate for victims and be a voice for those we have lost. And whereas during Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Victim advocates. Light, allowed, allowed. Allied professionals, survivors of abuse, their loved ones and communities come together to mourn the lives lost to domestic violence. Celebrate the progress made in this epidemic. And connect with others to create change so that every person can live in safety with dignity and respect. And whereas domestic violence affects people of every age, sex, race, religion and income level. Devastating consequences. For children, schools, workplaces and families for generations. With too many victims suffering in silence, silence afraid to seek help. And whereas domestic violence encompasses many forms of abuse. Physical, emotional, psychological, sexual and economic. Along with control such as stalking. Piece of firearms. Armed pets, all which cause long-term trauma and inflicts substantial economic loss. Estimating the United States to range from six billion to thirteen billion annually. With some communities bearing even higher burdens. And whereas in Pennsylvania, more than ninety thousand people each year. Turn to local domestic violence programs for help. Hundred four Pennsylvanians lost their lives to domestic violence in two thousand twenty-four alone. And more than fifteen hundred lives. And lost over the past decade. And whereas prevention and early intervention can break cycles of violence while healthy, respectful. Nonviolent relationships, a strong community support, offer support and hope. And whereas Wise Option at the YWCA North Central PA is dedicated. Providing advocacy, services, resources and education to those experiencing domestic violence. And to raising awareness through community training and outreach. Now therefore be resolved that we, the commissioners alike coming county proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five. As Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And urge all citizens, schools, businesses and community agencies to support this year's national campaign. With survivors always. Stand with survivors, honor those we have lost and work together to own and domestic violence in our community. Signed this date. By coming county commissioners Scott L. Metzger, chairman, Mark C. Sortman, vice chairman and Mark McSion secretary. And we're honored today to have the staff Wise Options for Women with us. And Amber Morin Star, the executive director of Wise Options, would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence should not be a hidden issue. It's happening in our neighbors, our neighborhoods, our workplaces, our schools and our churches. Every minute in America, twenty people are abused by an intimate partner. That's more than ten million lives broken every year. Here in Pennsylvania, we lost one hundred and nineteen lives just last year, most taken by firearms. One hundred and nineteen seats at dinner tables now forever empty. At the YWCA North Central PA, we see this crisis up close. In the past year, we provided life-saving support to more than seventeen hundred individuals from our community. Our shelter gave thousands of nights of safety to survivors and their children. Our hotline rang over fifteen hundred times, each call a cry for help. We walked beside survivors through hundreds of court hearings and through, and through our housing programs, we invested over one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to help fifty families rebuild their lives after violence. But these aren't just numbers, their names, their faces. I will never forget one mother who arrived in the middle of the night with her three children. They had nothing but the clothing on their backs. She told us, I don't care if I lose everything, I just need my kids to sleep without fear. That night, because of this community, our doors were open. Today she has a safe home, a steady job and children who can laugh again. That is what this fight is about. And this fight takes all of us to the sheriff's office. Thank you for your courage in serving PFAs, knowing each one may be among the most dangerous situations that you will face. For our judges and the court system, thank you for giving survivors protection, justice and hope. To our community partners, schools, healthcare, law enforcement, service agencies and donors, you are the safety net that that makes survival possible. And now I'd like to ask my YWCA staff to please stand. These are the people who answer the phone at two a.m. Who sit in court when a survivor feels alone, who open the door when someone arrives carrying nothing but fear. They are the heartbeat of this mission. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Thank you. This proclamation is more than just words on paper, more than just words spoken on a Thursday morning. It's a promise, a promise that survivors are not invisible, a promise that this community stands with them. And a promise that we will not stop until every home is a safe home. On behalf of the YWCA and the survivors we serve, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Amber, you just mentioned, you mentioned sheriff's office and thank them and, and you know, we just saw what happened down in New York. You know, three police officers' lives were taken. That was a domestic violence. That was a PFA. So we know how violent this is. It's, uh. You know, I, I dealt with, uh, when I was in probation for almost two decades, that was my caseload. When I was an agent, street agent, uh, I handled domestic violence cases. And, um. The manipulation, the, the control. Oh. It's evil. You, you hear it come out of their mouths. And, um. The manipulation especially. Uh, I sat with victims who cried and thought there was no way out. And your agency is there to help them. And we thank you for each one of your staff because I communicated with them on a lot of occasions. And that was the way they got out. Give them a place, a safe place to live and get back on their feet, get a new beginning. So, um, I often share this case. It's not just physical abuse, it's financial, it's emotional, it's verbal. I can think of one where, um. And I know the two young men and thank God they, they're, they're wonderful young men now. They actually have families of their own. And, and, um. Their mother shared with us that. The father who, who is no longer with us, he, he died, he actually died in prison. He said to the kids. During one of the, during one of the violent, the violent episodes in her home. They were in the living room, you know, pick a wall. Pick a wall because that's where your mom's brains are going to be on. And you think, how can you say that to an eight, nine-year-old kid? That's your son. Expect that doesn't have consequences on the family, the mother, the terror she lived. Well, he was gone. And so that's the emotional abuse. And, uh, he was actually on the emo- emotional. I guess there's a registry for children, youth that has to do with emotional abuse also. He was actually on that registry because of the horrible things that he said that this family had to live with. The terror that they had to live with. If you know of anybody who's experiencing any of this, please reach out and let them know there's hope. Let them know that they can get, you know, we'll direct them that and that, that direction to you folks to guide them and help them. It's nothing they did. You know? Nothing they did at all. The person that they're dealing with is sick and needs to be dealt with and held responsible. So we thank you so much for what you do. Now. Some work that when you go to. Work in the morning, you make a difference. You make a difference every day. A lot of people wonder if they make a difference in their jobs. You ladies do. So thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to just chime in the same thing. Thank you for the, the work you do. Um. You know, I think that, uh, one of the things with domestic violence, especially for the females, is, is there's an embarrassment. Talk about it and it's sad that that's, that's where they're at and that's how they feel, but, um, I have a very close personal friend that went through domestic abuse. In her first marriage and I knew that her first marriage wasn't good, but never would have known any of that, didn't know any of that until just about a year ago. So it happened many, many years ago and, and was never spoken of. She never talked about it. Um, and, and it's, it's a shame, but your group helped her. And again, I'm going back many, many years ago, but your group helped her, um, got her through that situation and, and made a better life for her. I, I would hope that, you know, as people see things like this proclamation and, and, and I know we've, we spoke a couple at other events. Um, that you guys have been at, and I just hope that that gets that awareness out there that people, you know, we, we talk about so many other different things in, in life with mental health or suicide that it, it's an embarrassment. But sadly enough, I think so is domestic abuse and we got to get them, the word out there that it's not an embarrassment. And as Commissioner Metzger said, it, it's not something you did wrong. But I think sometimes, um, the females that are involved take it that way. So, you know, I, you guys are doing a great job. I thank you for what you do. Um, I think that probably all of us know somebody, but probably don't know that they're going through it or that they went through it. So, uh, obviously as well, your confidentiality is, is wonderful that you, you keep that quiet as well, but thank you for what you do. Um. Just one other thing I want to, uh, touch upon and, and I, I don't want to be really political with this, but we got to fight with our judges too, to remind them. That domestic violence is real and they got to support the victim and not support person that did it. Now, I know there's a fine line there because maybe they didn't do some of the things that are said that they did. But they get a focus on the, on the victim when they're in court and, and it's my understanding you guys help. Very much in that manner. So I thank you for that as well. But we got to continue to work with our judges and make sure that they're supporting the victims. But thank you.
Um, one of it. One of the issues with this problem is everything is reactionary. Yet someone who is abused. And then. We jump into action, then we talk about the courts and how they can protect and it's all after the fact. And, um, my, my, in a previous life, my background was in education. I have a teaching certificate. Ever understood why? While we have these kids corralled and they are impressionable and educatable, that we don't discuss things like this. And when, uh, there, there's this side of America. That is like, oh, these things should be taught at home. These things should be taught at home. Now we mostly hear about politics and we don't want kids to be influenced politically, but this is way more important than that. And, uh, Scott read the stats, one in three women are, are in abusive relationships somewhere along the line. So how are they going to be taught at home? What, like who's doing this teaching? So the, just the awareness of, and, and so much we see that the, the abused. Then become abusers. And I, I'm sure whatever the statistics are of, of people who are, uh, of the, the spouses who are domestically abused, that the kids are abused in some way as well, or even just the seeing it as Trump is traumatic. And I, I'm sure there's a value to British literature. But there, there has to be a more, a, a greater societal value to having sociology classes in high schools that just are like, these are the numbers. And this is not how you're supposed to live, but you get these kids who that's all they've ever seen. It's all they've ever known, the people who love them. And take care of them, and this is how they act. So then when they grow up, it's just a perpetual cycle and. I know it's, it's tough to change the educational system. I know they're trying at the top and they're making adjustments and, you know, whether they're good or bad, whoever, uh, we'll, we'll find out. But, uh, until we start taking our youth and teaching our youth that these are the numbers, this isn't right. The different, what, what is verbally abusive, what is emotionally abusive? As Scott even mentioned financially abusive, which doesn't get mentioned much, but is a factor. Till we address, until we try to cut off the problem before it starts, then we'll just continue to react. And, um. You know, we can say all these things and we can support as we need to. I mean, that, the way the system is set up, you people are a lifeline. There's no doubt about that. Societally, from a, a bigger picture, we need to do more to be preventative and the way to be preventative is through the youth. And. Don't know why it's never been done. Um, what's because it'd be seen as radical or it'd be challenging or it's like, who's going to teach? I get all that. But just the simple facts, one in three, one in three women are in abusive relationships. Like that, that you just start with, with eight-year-olds and with ten-year-olds and with twelve-year-olds and say, hey, this isn't how you're supposed to act. And I'm sure part of the problem is that the people who make the laws probably grew up in stable households like most of us probably did, and they didn't see it and they don't know it. Um, it's one of the other overriding problems of education is, um, the people who are in education liked education and were good at education and they have trouble relating to the kids who aren't good at education and don't like it. But that's, that's the only place that we can help this problem if we really, really want to help it. Other than just reacting it. There, there's a difference in, you know. Putting on Band-Aids after it's already bleeding and that's what our system gives us now. And until we figure out a way to get into the educational system, we, we don't have a way to cut this off. So. I don't have an answer, but I know that's the path. And, um. I don't know if we have any, if, if you have any influence, I don't know if this has ever been brought up at all.
Uh, yes, I was just gonna say, Shante, raise your hand.
Whole school had. So I want to, I want to say that I think. And we are making conscious efforts to teach before it is. We do a lot of prevention and education and we do a lot of community events. And a lot of times those students, those one, seven, seven, three years and one and five high school. You know, before it like, you know, before it happens, but YWCA has put the conscious effort to prevention and education. And we try, we get our staff trained. So even if someone's not available, someone else can step in. So I could say for like home counties, I found two or bill that nine out of those school districts have accepted our invitation to let us be part of here.
That is, that is wonderful.
It's good news.
Um. And that's what we need. Fortunately, I'm sure it's not in every county, um, but it's a start. And, um, how many, do you know how, how many places that happens? How many counties that? Yeah.
That's going to the county. So like an entire agency, but other ones and they will overlap and we can share information.
Good.
I, I think the issue is funding. So I know that they're, it's always funding, especially for nonprofits. But I will say, um, like we have one prevention educator and Shante is busy non-stop trying to get the message out and do this prevention education. But we could probably use four more of Shante.
Well, that's why if it came through the curriculum, if it was part of, because you're an outside agency that needs help, that needs, and you need them to welcome you in. Fortunately, all of ours have.
And that hasn't always been the case. Shante is the one who was able to open a lot of those doors. Historically, we've gotten a lot of turn, you know, no, you know, parents don't want kids to talk about this. They're afraid they're going to open a can of worms. Teachers are afraid that students are going to disclose something that they're not going to be able to handle. But that's where we also come in because we can do education with the teachers and we can talk to them about how do you react? How do you respond and what kind of services are available in case you do have a student that's experiencing this at home? So, yeah, we are doing the prevention education, but like I said, funding is always an issue.
Funding is the issue and that's, that's why if it came through the state, if it was part of a curriculum. Funding would no longer be an issue, but having experts. And would be beneficial to corroborate, but we have to get to the kids. How long have you been doing that? How long have you been? Okay, did you start the program?
Background, it felt like we really need to get this in the school districts and make it be, you know, part of the curriculum.
Exactly.
Going to say our students are being supplied, I think, of the school districts because they have heard about it, they shared about it and they told your school. We need to have the YWCA. I had a call from Lowington School District and I told them, we, we do provide services and there is a service out there to help, but we support them if they don't come. So our students are here.
I mean, and one of the things too, as you people know, it's not. It, it is, uh, abuse is across the spectrum. It is not, uh, demographic, it is not a socioeconomic, like it is, abuse comes to every sector of our society. So, um, no matter what classroom you are in, you know, you could have the, from the, the smartest and the richest, all the way down to the poorest and the most academically challenged. And it is so broad scaled. Um. I can only imagine what some of your discussions are like in class.
And children are really driven on.
Yes.
Or take those numbers, they, that's the impact. They could say one set of us, but this moment, we get up to the high school, it's one of four of us. Just think about it. Most of the time we are together in groups of four or more. One of us, one more could be a victim of, of dating violence, you know, or teen, you know, anything domestic violence at home. I could say for sure, maybe at least ten percent of students know where the YWCA exists and what our purpose is. And that right there shows volumes that we are out there doing what we need to do, but like Amber said, with more funding, we can do way more things, better things here like home. Um, I compare us to the larger counties, not just, uh, we're large counties geographically, but we do hold a solid diversity of population here. And when I talk with my, uh, YWCA affiliates in other counties, if you tell me the things that they're providing with, and I'm like, how do you get those things? It's just, okay, show up to advocate today, show up to advocate today. And I'm making a conscious effort to be there, to be an invitation to come meet with y'all. Like, hey, the lieutenant governor, you know, I told Jordan Harris, I'm not here because I just walk around and clap. I'm really wanting to hear, make a difference and impact. I want you guys to understand what. One seven seven of what is, you know, my shirt and they said, what does that mean? That's a bunch of people repeat it because then you'll remember it. This is like home counties. This is brilliant support in all our surrounding areas. It's important that we understand that our children are our future. Just don't say it's not just a smoke, it's reality, you know, so.
What did you teach? What was your? Your sign, okay. Utah High School, most, okay. I mean, that's amen.
Yeah.
That's.
Good job.
So. Relationships are partnerships. And if you're in a relationship and you're not a partner. Someone doesn't give you respect because it's, it's mutual respect, it's communication. Then please, please end that relationship and reach out. Because anyone who tears down someone's self-esteem isn't helping you grow. Isn't helping you grow as a person. And, and they're not worth the time. And there's people out there that'll help you grow as a person, will make you feel wanted. You know, self-esteem is such a huge issue. And when you constantly tear someone down verbally. And when you constantly tear someone down verbally or physically. Or emotionally or financially, you're not helping them grow and the relationship isn't growing. That partnership won't grow. Instead, what we should be doing is asking our other half, what can I do to make your day better? And then that relationship will grow. So please reach out if you need that help.
You may.
Share that message with, with everybody because that's what it's about. That's a healthy relationship and you can say to your partner, whoever it is. What can I do to make your day better? Things will get much better as this, the self-esteem is going to grow, the relationship is going to grow, the respect will grow and the love will grow, the true love will grow. And that love that's pretending to be someone who controls you.
You may have said this, so I missed it. How many beds do you have?
So that question always makes me giggle because we're constantly taking beds apart and putting other beds together to make it work for whatever family comes in our door. So um, we at one point roughly a week ago, we had uh, 35 women and 25 kids just in the one floor of our building. So um, 25 kids in our community that were seeking emergency shelter from violence.
And I mean to cut you off, but the, the aspect, when they come to you. It's because they had nowhere else to go. Like if they could go move in with mom or a sibling or something, they're only going to you when there is nowhere else, when it's you or the street.
Yep. And then, so that's just a fraction of the individuals we serve. Um, we have a rapid rehousing program, so individuals who are financially abused and need help getting back on their feet, we're able to help them do so in new housing. Um, and we work with a lot of individuals that have a safe, safe place to go. Maybe they just need a PFA or counseling. So yeah, the emergency shelter is those who, that's their last choice. They don't have any other options.
Awesome. Like back, Shontae, is it? What was your name? Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to miss your name, but right when I started saying it, I was like, I think I'm going to get it wrong. So how many? How many boys? You're generally speaking, do you ever see, because like. The statistics show you just as a kid, you kind of do what you see as you grow. Like if you grew up in a household where people smoke, you're much more likely to smoke. So if you grow up in a household where it's abusive, you're much more. Like, do you see like light bulbs go on if kids are like, I didn't, I don't want to say I didn't realize this was wrong, but I didn't.
I come in, I actually have to see this, I go down, join up such a healthy relationship program, always from. The Bolce's daycare center, I'll be up to high school, I get to that middle school. Those kids are sometimes hesitant, but lately their moral or going to say, well, that was bad. Cause I give them like an assessment and it's not an assessment where they get greeted. It's, it's like a conversation. And I do give out those snacks that they are more intrigued if they get something, but uh.
If you want to give us snacks, we're all.
Can I have you come up to the podium as well? That way we can hear what you're saying online. That way it's available for everyone.
It's lonely up here.
And if you can state your name again, Shontae.
My name is Shontae Hall and I am the prevention educator as well as the medical advocate here at the YWCA Williamsport.
Can you repeat everything you've said for the last twenty?
Just ignore him. Go ahead.
So, but what were you going to say about the males?
Yeah, about just, I get, I think. One knows that the physically abusive is wrong, I mean, but the, the verbal and the emotional abuse that is enlightening to the kids. As you said, that they're like, oh, that's what I grew up with and I didn't even realize that was uh.
Abusive.
Abusive, yes.
Um, I'm going to say with the new um, focus on digital abuse. A lot of the youth, I have them bring out their phones and the teachers will say, we're not going to take your phones. Do me a favor, take your phone out. You don't have to open it, but tell me, how many people's location do you have on your phone? And they're like, why? Why is that important? I'm just asking, why is it so important for you to know the wheres and hows of all these people? Why do you care? Why do you need to know? But if you didn't know, why would it bother you? And they're like, because, I'm like, are you there really, are you, I guess, really friends? You know, I'm just saying, and they don't understand the severity of the cell phone usage. And how damaging it could be when they don't have access to it. And that's the hard part, what we're dealing with now. Because if I block you, that means I don't like you. But if I block you, that means. You might've done something bad. Or what if I didn't? What if I believe I didn't do anything to you, you know? So a lot of scenarios I have is based on. What we have in front of us. Meet them where they're at so they can understand. I'm not going to go there and only talk about if a man comes in the house and he's strangling his wife because it's not choking, it's strangling. If he's strangling his wife or his sibling, it's domestic violence. No, I want to talk to them about what they care the most about. How about if someone sends you a cash app and says, hey, I need you to, you can add this money. I noticed how well you did in school. I noticed how many touchdowns you made at the football game this year, at this last game. You may, you, you will help us get somewhere we've never been. Imagine that weight on that student who just bosh, just came to school to be a student, to be a great athlete. And all of a sudden someone's using money as leverage to hold over them. We realize domestic violence is not just me and she and you and they. It's the world we live in, human trafficking. That domestic violence falls underneath that because a lot of times we hold ourselves to this higher state than what we truly know we should be. But meanwhile, all it is, is that we should, if you know something, share something. If you care just a second, like I said, that five percent. And those boys, those young men are so willing to stay after or tell their teacher, hey, I have a question. That right there lets you know a light bulb went off when they say, I have a question. So.
See, and that's one of the other problems because our generation doesn't get the whole cell phone tracking. And that's even a thing with parents, like I don't, I've never had it. I, I don't know where my kid, I mean, I know where my kids are. They're, they should be in class right now. But we've, I, we've never had it and. Ever thought about, we just talk about it amongst adults, like do you have life 360 on your kid? Cause I don't, because we didn't have it when I was a kid. I feel like, you know, and I think I turned out all right. But um, I never thought about the abusive aspect and the controlling manipulative aspect. Of knowing where all your friends are and not knowing the power over it. So, and those are things that. You know, I've had lots of discussions about it, but I've never thought of it from that aspect. So just having the conversations brings more awareness.
Yes, it does.
That's fascinating.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to get a picture with you and your staff.
Yeah.
With the proclamation.
And we have two board members here too. They should be recognized. They're very helpful, so.
Would you like to come up and say anything?
You have to, even if you wouldn't. No, I can't.
Yep, and thank you for serving on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you. Yeah, absolutely. How's the baby? How was the, how was the ten? Take care.
I'd just like to know, our domestic violence vigil is October 23rd at 5:00 PM at the YW.
We'll be there. Thank you. Yep. Okay, moving on to uh, reports, Nikki.
Good morning.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification is an invoice for a fair buyout to be paid on September 25th, 2025. In the amount of $133,694.52 and that's a hundred percent out of the general fund.
Okay. Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And then presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through October 8th, 2025, to be paid on October 1st, 2025. In the amount of $501,187.90.99% out of the general fund and 9.01% out of RMS.
Okay. Keeping it low, keep it going.
That one's better.
Yep. Much better. We like that. Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you. Informationally, Spike, morning.
All right, good morning. I've got two transfers here for informational items. Heard in the district attorney's office, Lindsay Collins. Paralegal pay grade seven, full-time, $20.200937 cents per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date. October 6th, 2025, and then the prothonatory office, Cabrina Jones. Civil processing clerk, pay grade five, full-time at $17.64 per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, that was September 28th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to personnel actions.
Moving on down to personnel actions, approving the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment. Subject to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. In the prison, James Mitchley, morning driver. Union part-time at 1920 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually. That's a start date anticipated of October 6th of 2025.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Spike.
Okay, at this time we'll recess our commissioners' public meeting. For the board of assessments revisions, then we'll convene the board of assessments revisions at this time. Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to seek your either approval or denial of these real estate exemption requests. I only have three. Do you want to vote on them individually?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first one is for Plunkett's Greek Township. The reason for exemption is the Muslim. And this house is the remains of the Whipple family and apparently when. The trust was depleted, it was deeded over to the township last year. So my request for you is to approve this because in central is a cemetery.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say, all fair side.
Aye.
The next one is Muncie Public Library. The reason for exemption is the library, this used to be owned by Muncie Burl and they transferred it over to Muncie Public, Public Library last year. There's no loss in taxes and my recommendation is to approve.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
The last one is Faith Westland Church. And the reason for exemption is two houses. My recommendation is to deny, and I also spoke to the pastor. I think he was confused because he thought he was vowing exemption on the church and I said, the church is already exempt. And I asked him, what do you use the houses for? And he said, nothing. I said, they do not pertain to the exemption and my recommendation would be denial and he's fine with that.
Okay, okay. I'll make the motion to deny.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well during the board of assessments revisions at this time, it will reconvene to commissioners' public meeting. Moving on to action items. Is he on the phone? Hutch, you with us?
I am. I'm here. Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, commissioners, for your approval is in agreement with Penn Core to complete the required permitting to close out the. Hughesville radio tower site in the amount of $10,500 and it is a budgeted item.
Any motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hutch.
Okay, Sam Miller. Sam, be with us.
Okay, then I can read that for you.
Okay.
Action item 6.2 for Samuel Miller. Vote to approve the event contract with Penn College for the lithium ion battery class in the amount of $2,525.10. This is not a 2025 budgeted item and it's funded by LEPC.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next will be the sheriff. Morning.
Morning.
The sheriff would uh, ask that you vote to approve the agreement with Axon Enterprise in the amount of $33,186.24 per year. And this is an approved uh, budgeted item.
Okay, and this pertains to what in your department?
It would be a five-year contract with Axon Tasers for replacements of our tasers that we have now.
Okay. It's for five years? Motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nancy, you're up for the next uh, three.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Gable probation is asking for your approval for Adalphi for the 2526 contracting season. On the second page there, you see the list of uh, the programs that we use. And the rate increases aren't that bad this year.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one, 6.5, we are asking for your approval for an amendment to Cornell Braxton. Um, for a program that is called unarmed gun violence prevention. It's programmed to aim to educate our counties youth on realities and consequences of gun violence while promoting safety and personal responsibility. Uh, this service will be offered as part of a 12-session curriculum with up to 10 use per session. Uh, the cost for this amendment, uh, if, should we choose to use this program, uh, will be $12,000. Uh, costs will be covered by Act 148 monies, uh, special grant funding, Pennsylvania Promising Practices. And that's, that is in um, sort of the new budget for us.
Okay, so if we choose to use this program, where's this class is held at?
I'm going to, I honestly, I really don't know where they're holding it at.
It wouldn't be kids that are in custody out at their, their group home, would it be?
It could be, honestly, I'm really not sure. I wasn't given that information of where they were going to be uh, having that at.
Email us to us later?
Sure, yeah, I can do that.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
You want to table it until we get the. Information?
Well, the cost is covered by the Act 148 monies. So it's, it's a question of whether you guys want to go ahead and prove it or wait to get that answer where, where it's held at. Whether it's a kid that's in custody or it's a kid who's required to attend it locally.
I mean, I guess, I guess it doesn't really matter one way or the other. Yeah, I'll vote to approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the last one is for uh, 6.6, we're asking for your approval for um, on 2526 contract with Perseus House. Some of the services, there are no rate increase and then some of them, three of them, there are six percent increase and then a small 1.62%. And right now we do not have anybody at Perseus House.
Okay. Have we used that before? I don't remember hearing that.
Yeah, we've, we don't use it very often though. We just keep it in our back pocket just in case.
All right, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you commissioners. I'm asking for that information you asked for right away.
Thanks, Nancy.
Good day.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, Maya, you're up for the next three. Good morning.
The first item, 6.7, vote to approve the intergovernmental agreement between. Um, Domestic Relations Office and the Sheriff's Office for Security. This is just a, a agreement that we. um, domestic relations office and the sheriff's office for security. This is just a agreement that we do every year that they offset their costs for um, services with Title Four D monies.
A motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe six point eight is actually a duplication.
Yep. Motion to accept.
No, like it should, it's
Oh, yes.
It's the same. Yes.
Same thing, so.
Yep, it's the same doc.
All right, so we just, we all need to address that one.
Yeah.
And six, six point nine.
Yep, six point nine, um, vote to approve the agreement with Farm Chem Incorporated. Um, this is for substance abuse thefting, and it's not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Which department does that have to do?
Uh, this is adult probation.
That's what I thought, okay. Uh, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Morning, Forrest.
Morning. Uh, so uh, the item I have today, this is an invoice from Montoursville Borough for accessibility improvements at the Borough Building. Uh, the county's uh, settlement agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice requires us to bring over seventy facilities into ADA compliance for voting, which we've been working on for uh, several years now. Uh, most of them are being corrected under county contract. However, in a few cases, the facility wanted to undertake the improvements on their own and seek reimbursement, and Jackson Township's one example of that. Montoursville Borough here today is is another. And at the beginning of this process, of course, the county pledged to all these facilities that the burden is the county's uh, for this settlement agreement, not theirs, because we need them to continue as polling places. So the Borough is seeking thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars in reimbursement. This is pursuant to the agreement we signed with them earlier this year. It was back at the April seventeenth meeting where we approved an agreement with them.
Okay. Thanks for having a picture here for clarification.
Right.
That helps us understand exactly what's being done.
Yeah, they had to, they had to re uh, uh, lay down new concrete in a significant portion of the of their parking lot in order to smooth everything out and get a level van accessible parking space and paint it. Uh, they, I think they had to redo the sidewalk because you need an accessible path of travel from the stall to the door. Uh, they had to put up a placard to designate that van accessible space, so it's it's very similar to a lot of work we've done at other sites. Uh, but but we've used the the Borough Building as a polling place for for many years, and uh, you know, this way we can continue to do that.
Okay, I'm glad to see it's on that side of the building because on the other side of the building, you're tearing up the time capsule.
Right.
On Tuesday, I'm thinking, I hope it's not the same side.
And that's, that's always been one of the challenges of this pro- uh, project, because it's not just one place where you're working. It's seventy places, and each one is its own kind of puzzle that you have to, you have to look at the the facility. Where's the parking? What's the terrain like? You know, how are we going to get in the components that we need to check off all the accessibility boxes that the the Department of Justice is looking for? Uh, and it and then that ends up looking a little different at each place.
The terrain on that side is flat, whereas on the other side of the building, there's a little, little tiny small, small incline.
Exactly, yeah, and we're often, there can be more than one way to get in, and so you're looking at, well, what's the door that voters have always used? Are we going to be able to continue using that, or do we have to think about a different traffic flow? So there's all these kinds of questions that go into each site. Uh, but I think it came out looking really good there.
Okay, good. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, and I'll just note that uh, to- uh, starting tomorrow, we're really starting to taxi down the runway for the November election now. Uh, and tomorrow, we should have sample ballots available at voter services, and we'll start getting ballots out in the mail to people who have requested those, so.
When, when should the public anticipate receiving those in the mail?
Well, some will be going out tomorrow, more will be going out next week. Uh, at the beginning of the process where we're, you know, thirty days out, we always have a backlog, you know, because all of the applications that have accumulated, and uh, that process usually takes a couple days to get all of them out. So uh, you know, the ones that are going out tomorrow, maybe they'll get to people over the weekend. The ones that are being mailed early next week will will themselves take a couple days because, of course, everything is going down to Harrisburg. Uh, but we expect, you know, anybody who applied for a mail ballot uh, either early this year or over the summer for the November election, they should be seeing their ballots arriving in the mail by later next week.
And and they should only receive one in the mail.
That's always the plan, yes, yeah, you only get one ballot. Now, people may get uh, materials in the mail. You know, I took a call from somebody earlier this week uh, upset because they got an application in the mail they that they didn't ask for. But that's what happens during the, uh, when the election cycle really gets into full swing, you have parties, candidates, you have outside groups, and that's what this was where they're they're getting voter data from the state, or they could be getting commercial data, and they're going to mail materials to people about about candidates, about issues. They may send applications to register to vote. They may send applications for mail ballots, but applications are just that. It's just a blank piece of paper. It doesn't mean anything.
So check the address to see where it came from.
Sure.
To make sure it doesn't come from voter registration.
Yeah, it's coming from an outside agency, obviously. Yeah, and and unless they asked for something, uh, it didn't come from us. Uh, I mean, our 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 mailings always say like coming county board of elections, but we don't, we only send out an application if somebody calls us and says, hey, I need you to send me something because I'm not online, and we'll do, we'll do that. But uh, the the ones that tend to get the strongest reaction are cases where they'll actually take the, this outside group will take the data that they're given, and they'll pre-fill fields on an application. That really gets some people upset when they get that, because sometimes the data is wrong. We got one from somebody where it mixed up their data with someone else with a similar name down in Lancaster, and you know, and and it wasn't us. Uh, it was, you know, uh, these groups that uh, are making mistakes with their data, and then it comes to people's houses, and they get very upset.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Take care.
Okay.
Before we have Malik come up, can we have Maya come back up? Because six point eight was actually not a duplication. It's a a separate line item.
Okay.
So they needed delineation, um, I guess a split for the services they actually provide, like doing some of the warrants, and then versus the security. The state needs two separate functions, so I apologize for that.
A motion to accept that. One's for security, one's for service.
Correct.
Okay, motion except the six point eight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Ah, aye.
I apologize. Thank you.
Don't let it happen. Thanks, Michael.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Malik.
Six point eleven, seeking your approval for the amendment to the five county municipal solid waste management plan memorandum memorandum of understanding. This is a twenty twenty five approved budgeted item. This is for the remaining cash match from the rem- from the other four counties associated with the plan.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Six point one two, seeking your approval for the twenty 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 four, twenty twenty five PA Housing Affordability and Enhancement Condition and Ward Letter with PA Housing Finance Agency in the amount of nine hundred thousand, twenty five thousand. This is a twenty five, twenty twenty five approved budgeted item through the fair grant funds.
This is past, sir. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Malik. Have a good day. Thanks.
Good morning.
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 Requesting uh, vote to approve the agreement with Supply Source in the amount of sixty three thousand, seventy one dollars and fifty seven cents for furniture for the corner building on Wahoo Drive.
Is there a motion?
Did we, I know we discussed furniture ad nauseam. Um.
We we originally told it was over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Twenty hundred forty thousand dollars. Then we got, we were told it was down to forty four thousand, which is more realistic. Now it's up to sixty three thousand this morning. So that's a twenty uh, that's a nineteen thousand dollar increase.
That hasn't changed on my behalf, that number, that sixty three thousand. Um, I think maybe there was just somebody incorrectly read that if you see the agreement, Supply Source works with several manufacturers. So it's not a clean, it's not a clean-cut invoice like I'm used to. Unfortunately, you have to add each of those manufacturers fees.
And that's, and that's being funded by the cremation fund.
Correct. So that's funding we have saved since this project started with the feasibility study in two thousand and twelve. It was originally put under um, the budget for the building, but we're offsetting the cost with that fund instead.
Furniture hasn't been bought yet, correct? Okay.
And just to clarify further, also that uncharacterized on the office space on the duty differently to get block away the cat um, in the theaters, but we're trying to say that if they did not hold valid process and to take care of that right the toward
Okay.
But again, that's just the four thousand.
All right, so the extra nineteen thousand, we get a better price on that stuff, that chairs and things like that?
Well, certainly. Certainly, yes, here's the time one to put supply sources in shift for that office. That's what like saying, like you can buy a chair off state, that's not what their business area therefore to ox, and before that's where you're seeing so I would say that you probably could go five do that again, because let's say walls and get better
Okay, is this? How how time crunched is this?
We are very time crunched. We are already behind because of the lead time on this furniture. So that was something we expressed before is that we figured that we would be behind on time.
My my concern is um, we've denied judges some chairs, and I'm looking at all these desk chairs at five hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty three cents a piece. I know Mr. Metzger sits on a chair that costs a hundred and eighty dollars. Yep, I went to Staples to get it. Um, there's one list here where I think it's ten chairs I saw. And I made a phone call to the judges after they spent five hundred dollars on a chair, and then expressed our dis- disat- dissatisfaction with that, and they apologized and said they won't let it happen again. Not sure where the ten chairs go, but there's ten shares of
That would be for the conference room.
Four hundred and twenty five dollars a piece. We denied that for our planning department when they requested the same amount be spent on chairs. Um, side chairs at three hundred and seventy eight dollars a piece. I'm not sure what we have in this building left over from either the uh, um, gas industry or our executive plaza, and then some leather chairs at five hundred or nine hundred and sixty five dollars a piece. Um, I see the conference table in here at two thousand, one hundred and seventy seven dollars, and again, I I just don't understand why we can't use a conference table that we already own.
Well, this is unfortunately a conference table that was proposed over a year ago, and it's got electrical specs specifications to it that are in the floor um, of the building.
Understood, but a table can be retrofitted by our maintenance staff.
And we use Supply Source because they were a validated county vendor for lots and lots of furniture, so that's that was the guidance provided to us before.
Uh, and I understand that, Kate, but thi- this guidance was provided by previous boards that I I I just don't think we looked at things. Um, you know, nothing against Supply Source, but when I look at desks costing five hundred and a thousand dollars, and that, these are pieces that then all get put together, and then seeing installation costs, I forget where that was, installation cost of six thousand dollars. We're, I'm not sure that our own team can't install the stuff for a lot less money than that. I'm not sure that you know, not that Supply Source is not a reputable company that's a local, that I appreciate we working with local people, but I just think the numbers are incredibly high. Okay, is there a motion?
I know we're on a time crunch. I'd I'd like to make a motion to table it for a week so we could just look at it more, talk to Maya, and talk to Kate, and talk to everyone involved.
There are seconds to table it.
I I would second the motion to table it.
Hey, um, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye. I will tell you one thing that no reason why we should be spending five hundred dollars on a chair. So, and I very expressed that to courts, but an apology from the courts, so. Um, we also had a planning department that was it eighteen of chairs? They wanted, they wanted twenty some chairs, I think, at the same, same number, four hundred or some. And we turned that down, so we have to go back to the table, and either they give us a lower price or we go elsewhere. I don't know how, you know, let's not, I I know for me, everything's kind of new, but you know, we can go buy that chair probably at Sam's Club for fifty nine dollars or something. But to buy three hundred and fourteen dollar chairs for side chairs that how often is anybody sitting on them is is crazy.
Yeah, well, it's one of the discussions that we've often had that we think with just government, that companies have learned that the government will just sign, whether it's local, state, federal, whatever, that.
Yeah, I'm I'm not picking on the coroner's office or Supply Source. I'm I'm picking on government in general, the way we spend money and the way we look at things.
Right.
I just don't think we do a good job at it. We don't even spend you know, listen, if it was in our house, we wouldn't be spending five hundred dollars for a computer chair. So, out of our our own checkbook. So, um, that's the way I look at it. My home's ninety nine dollars. So, um, when I needed one here, I I went down to Staples, I looked to see what was on sale. I didn't look at the other ones. I looked to see what was on sale. Did you go over to their ones? So. E- even here in in this room, these are leftovers from the gas industry, which I I don't know what, if we have any investment in them whatsoever. The chairs that we sit at, they wanted to throw away and buy brand new ones, and and the three of us stopped that because there's nothing wrong with the three chair, the five chairs we're sitting on. But government waste was thrown out. We got a new building. We need new chairs. We don't. Okay, we'll, we'll get with you and work on this further, okay?
I'll have you get with Chuck. I won't be here, but I'm sure he'll meet with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Second one.
The next one I have is a vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with MOPAC in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred, fifteen dollars and fifty cents. And that is for an evidence utility cart, and that's completely grant funded through the LSA grant.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, six point one five, um, seeking your approval today to purchase a piece of equipment um, from Marco for the corner build um, in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred, sixty two dollars, and this is actually for a UPS um, system to keep the servers and switches up when the power goes down.
A motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Six point one six, seeking your approval to purchase a um, firewall um, with a five-year support for the corner build. This is from E, um, sorry, this is in the amount of two thousand, six hundred, ninety dollars and nineteen cents, not twenty nine cents.
A motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And then six point one seven, um, seeking your approval to purchase a rack for the equipment at the corner build in the amount of two thousand, sixty nine dollars. Um, and and sorry, I, please know that all three of these are in the coroner's Um, and, and sorry, I, please know that all three of these are in the coroner's twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And last, six point one s- or six point one eight, um, seeking your approval to sign into a contract for the coroner's Quincy software. This is in the amount of six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars each year. Um, and since we signed in for a two-year agreement, um, they're gonna keep that the same for both years. And this is in our budget.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How many comments?
Yeah, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna beat the dead horse.
Yeah, thank you. Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, I know when you, when we have a budget of, you know, a hundred million dollars, whatever it is, um,
We're not.
To look at, uh, you know, the difference, what is it, thirty-two?
One thirty.
One thirty-two?
Yeah.
I knew it was over a hundred, but, um, when you look at the difference in a chair price of a hundred dollars and that some people can say, well, that's, you know, what's, what's it matter? And it's just the overall philosophy and in, in, when you have twenty-seven departments and you have seven elected officials and you, you know, a, a couple hundred here and when we're talking about chairs, like we just looked at, you know, the difference in twenty thousand dollars, well, you know, the thousands of dollars turn into hundreds of thousand dollars, which turns into millions of dollars. And if you just never care, if anything's like, well, that, who cares, who cares, who cares, who cares? That's where you get to this point. So, you either have to look at everything or you look at nothing. And that's what, you know, we're nervous had been done for a long time and um, it's not, it's not being nitpicky, it's just being, it's being consistent with the philosophy of, you know, why pay more when you don't have to? Whether it's a fifty-dollar difference or a five-thousand-dollar difference or a fifty-thousand-dollar difference. Uh, and that's what we're, the way we're trying to approach everything. So as, you know, as we're not, we don't pick on any departments, we don't, we're just, that's the philosophy. And, um, and that's what we're gonna have going forward with everything.
Thank you. Um, general public, we had comments from the audience. Hey, any online?
Online, we have two comments. Uh, the first comment was from Carrie, which was earlier, um, asking that the speaker from, uh, the Y W C A come up to the podium so she could hear her comments. And the second, uh, comment is from Mr. Thomas Adams. Uh, great anxiety and causes snowballing effects in society, especially the lives of our children. From the pettiest of crimes, the penalties are too lenient. We now have auto theft in the co- in the county with, uh, soft-on-crime approach does not work. Repeat offenders are not getting the message. I think we must pressure our state representatives to look again at sentencing guidelines. I know this was done. And that's it.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned till next Thursday, October ninth, twenty twenty-five, right here in this meeting room at ten A M. Thank you. Thank you.